Yeah, when it's on this screen, this is the YouTube studio. It'll show excellent condition or connection. So you know, and it's got the live up in the corner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President County Commissioner, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, Okay, the reading for this special meeting this morning is to address a coma complaint that was received by the Attorney General's Office on June 10th, 2020. Mr. Meeks has done his due diligence in addressing all the concerns that was brought up in this coma complaint. And I'm going to turn it over to him to explain what the complaint was and the results of that coma complaint.
Thank you, Commissioner. Basically, we received the actual official coma complaint in October. Due to two of the commissioners being in quarantine, we actually got an extension on our reply, which was submitted. And we received the response back from the Attorney General's Office concerning the possibility of some coma violations. We did have some technical coma violations. I've attached a script that we're going to have to follow from this point forward. Basically, it basically puts the statutes onto the record. We'll have to read the record every time that we do that. And Kendall will have to put those minutes in verbatim when those are done. I will keep the forms and then give those to Kendall at the end of the meeting. And then the next time we have a meeting or review the minutes, we'll have to make sure that they're followed specifically to what we're doing. There's two things that we did in the technical violation. One was we did the statutory minimum, which was saying, non-elected identifiable to protect their interest. But what you do is add another two sentences or another two words, basically saying for employee evaluations or for job descriptions or for, you know, things of that nature. And then attorney-client privilege would be for litigation or for review of a contract or something like that. It has to have another specific descriptive word. And then the time date stamp is of interest. We have to make sure that we say what time we're coming back to the room. We had our executive sessions in the room. And so we would say seven minutes. We'd have a stopwatch. We'd make sure that we were coming in and out of that executive session at that time. But we've got to say the exact time on the clock. So if we decide to go into the other room, we have to make sure we're back in here. So if we want an executive session for five minutes, we'd have to return to this room at 10:10. And it would have to be noted on the record. The other part we have to do is when we come back out of executive session, we've got to make sure that we have a motion and a second and a vote on putting the meeting from executive session back into open session. So sometimes we come out of executive session, go back into executive session. We'll have to formalize that process again to make sure we're following the script.
And I think the other thing is, if we made note we've already changed, was that we had to specifically say that we're returning to this room when we make the motion. That's another part of the script that...
Yeah, the script.
And if I read my, read this right, and I read it three or four times, was that was the biggest fallacy that we had, was we didn't note that we were coming back to this room. And we didn't note the time, the exact time that we were coming back to room.
Well, we always, I think we always had a stopwatch in the executive sessions. What we have to say is we're going to come back into this room in five minutes. So it'd be, at this point, it'd be 10:11.
Correct.
So we have to make sure that we follow that time. And then we're here back at 10:11. So the secondary part that we had a violation on, but it was once again, an issue of how we went into executive session during the wind farm. We went in for attorney-client privilege, and it should have been for proprietary. And that is something that we had with Apex. Attorney General's Office said that we just need to make sure that we can clarify that. Where there was some confusion on that day, it was very stressful. It was totally, you know, my fault. I made a phone call on that. But we had to make sure that we went in for the proper procedure. So that was one of those days where we should have went in for proprietary. Instead, we went for attorney-client. But the way that the case law is, is that if you can go in for an executive session, and it's reasonable, there's no, kind of no harm, no foul. So the part of this is, is that the commission, Nick Rules already signed this as a former commissioner. We have a consent we have to sign that basically says that, you know, we understand that we had those technical violations and that we will either get training or pay a $50 fine by April 1 of 2021. So that's what happened with that.
And a training length is an hour.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, I mean, obviously KAC, we got that training when we went. But because of COVID, KAC is not planning on having their convention. So we'll have something maybe here on the screen and do that training. And training is always a good thing. And the script, the script is something that is formalizing the process of going into executive session.
I myself has already signed the form. And so we're down to one other commissioner that...
And myself.
And yourself that needs to sign the form.
So it looks like this expires at the end of the day?
It does.
Yes, and I want to apologize...
I will have to have this reviewed.
I understand.
And I will have this reviewed.
I understand.
But it might take me a couple of free weeks.
Yeah, I understand. I was in quarantine.
So if it's $50 or taking the course, that's probably going to be my recommended action.
Understand. What I'll do is I'll sign this. And if Commissioner O'Hare signs it, I'll still send it to the AG's office with that letter.
If this would have been shared with me before this meeting, I certainly would have had a chance to attend to it.
No, I understand. No, and I apologize. I was in quarantine up until January 9th. So I'm sorry for that.
Yes, I think, you know, this, what is it, 22-page document?
Yeah, I understand. And I completely agree. I'm sorry about that.
And a couple of months ago, we discussed this very same thing. There looks like there's been some things that have been added since that time.
I don't...
Yeah, there's some information in here about something that happened in December. So the first time I seen this complaint on this was probably October, November timeframe.
Right.
And at that time, there were two issues that we talked about. And you said that both of them you'd take care of. So I don't see any sense of urgency other than...
No, I understand. I was, I apologize. I was in quarantine. I was hoping to have this meeting last week, but it didn't, it didn't come to fruition. So it's, I was informed I had a first-person contact and had to go into quarantine.
No problem, no problem.
Very good. So I'm going to give this back to Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
As my intention to kick the train.
If you have any questions, Commissioner, just give me a call or have your counsel call me.
So I noticed that there's an executive session on the agenda. We'll have to follow the script. We'll have to write in, I don't know. Maybe the chairman or myself could follow the form and make sure we're following it correctly.
And that's included in this package?
We'll have to specify if it's justification.
It's set for 10:20. Can I go ahead and make that motion? We have to wait till 10:20.
One of the other things that we've talked about with regards to our agendas is probably formalizing those even more. So unfortunately, because of the time on that, I would say we probably need to wait till 10:20 to go into that executive session. Unless you want to amend your agenda to have it going, you know, obviously going now. But just based off the time issues with the agenda, you're going to have to follow your agendas pretty...
And I've actually read enough in here to know that I will not, under any circumstances, sign this.
Understand, understand. So just make sure when it comes to agendas, you're going to need to follow them more closely. We won't be able to have the fluid meetings anymore. We'll have to make sure we follow the time stamp. So the other things we need to probably add at some point on the agendas is a commission time to actually have discussions, you know, kind of like what the City of Fort Scott does, have that part. And then also the comments by the people within the community. Put that at the end of the meeting or the beginning of the meeting. And so you don't have to amend your agendas to allow those people to discuss things. But giving the commissioners each time to talk. Because amending the agenda is possible, and is legal. But you probably don't want to do that because you want to make sure you're following your agendas.
Does there have to be a time on it? Can you just have the meeting and the flow of it in the agenda and not have a specific time next to it?
I think probably that, probably not having the timestamp on it would probably be better on some levels. I mean, we know we're doing... But what I'm saying to the, when the general public comes in and speaks, you want to make sure that it's a specific time.
We have to put a timestamp on that because they'll want to know when to be here.
But you want to leave that to probably the end. And then the commissioners' comments will probably want something you want to put at the end too, to allow for, in case something comes up during the meeting and you want to have that comment about the agenda issue.
The only, the only thing I can think of that might be a turn on not doing a timestamp is people wanting to be here during a particular discussion, and they don't know what time it would occur.
Right, and that's, sometimes things go over. Sometimes they go under. So it's a matter of when you call that, call the time on the agenda. So unlike, you know, and this is, in our complaint, we have, you know, three and four deal with talking about specific things within, within the agenda itself. When you guys had an attorney-client privilege and you had a third party or another attorney come in and give you guys a second opinion, we've got to make sure we name that attorney. And then when we have that justification, we've got to make sure we specifically say what's it about. So it's an elected official. The commissioners, myself and Kendall, we've got to say, hey, this is about an employee matter regarding to job description. So he's got to make sure we clarify the next step. The statutory minimum is what's in the KSA, but we have to make sure we give justification for while we're going in.
It's amazing, in six years, how it's changed. Six years ago, you was lucky to even have an agenda.
We never had an agenda.
Never had an agenda. And in today's environment, we're going to strictly regulated agenda where you really don't get a lot of interaction that you used to get.
Your time, your timestamp's going to be really important.
And I said it, and I'll say it again. I really did enjoy the banter with the public.
You could put, you could put a banter session at the end of the agenda, but you'd still need to make sure that it's done timely.
I know.
So maybe Tuesday afternoons, you could go from 1:30 to two for public comment.
I'm just saying, a lot of the issues that we had, that we had public banter.
Yes.
They got to hear what they wanted to say.
Well, I'd say that they would still be able to do that just after Eric, let's say, the road and bridge director makes their presentation. You're not going to be able to have someone interrupt the meeting.
Like we have had.
Like you have had.
Which I think that's a good thing.
But the other part of that is they're going to have to wait till the end of the meeting to make their comments.
Unless it's that important, they can...
So it's just a formalization?
It is.
Thank you.
Watching water boil. Or trying to boil, you know, whatever.
Is it easier to boil water in the mountains than it is in the valley?
It is.
I figured you might know the answer to that question.
However, I do not know the exact temperature difference that it is.
You need your thermodynamic charts and...
Yeah.
Phase diagrams to figure that out. Well, while we're waiting on the time to flip by, I'd like to make a statement. I have really enjoyed serving with this commission. I admire Lynn O'Hare and his strength pertaining to hawking the budget and preserving taxpayer interest in this organization that we call Bourbon County. It was nice to see that you advocated for the reduction of the mill this past year. And I could always count on you standing up for the taxpayer in many situations. And I'd say, Mr. Beth, I've enjoyed working with you the past, what, has it been three months?
Two and a half or so, I think, maybe.
Yes, it has.
Appreciate your ability to quickly learn and discern fact from fiction and get to the heart of an issue. And I wish you the best in your four years that you have in front of you.
You know, Jeff, I appreciate that compliment. It's been a very trying time in the last two years for us.
It has been.
Everything that's went on and on. And I do, I try my best to keep the taxpayers in mind and find, to figure out what we can do to save a taxpayer money. And how do we grow revenue without taxing our constituents?
And I do admire that.
And I know you were on board with all that, too.
I can count on you for making the decisions on behalf of the taxpayer. And I sincerely appreciate that.
I appreciate your backing on that. On some financial issues that we did, you know, on the medical side of it, too. We had a big challenge in going forward with that. And it's still challenging. Medical's a very, very important to Bourbon County. All right, where we at?
So I'd move that we recess to executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And I believe it is to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. Subject to be discussed during executive session would be confidential.
Yes, understand. You need to actually read off the KSA number.
Okay, KSA number 75-4319B.
Qualify your contracts.
What?
No, it'd be confidential data related...
To discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. The subject to be discussed during executive session is confidential. Open session will resume today at, well, by the time we get there, can I say 10:22?
Right. You also have to say...
The last 10 minutes?
It's confidential, but you also have to say what, kind of like, if it's, you know, concerning to a business or a medical or...
It's concerning to medical.
Okay, and there's actually, part of the KSA, there's a B. There's also a subsection you have to read off, too. The number needs to be put into the record.
Oh, B4.
There you go, yeah. And then when you come out of executive session and you decide to go back in, you have to follow the rules.
Open session will resume today at 10:22 a.m. In this room, we will leave...
10:22 or 32?
Oh, sorry, 10:32. Starting at 10:22, will end at 10:32. Starting in the room...
Next door, yeah.
Down next door.
The other, the other part of that is you have to make, it's whose name who's going to be in the...
I'm getting there.
Okay, just sorry.
You're getting ahead of me.
Sorry.
Those persons to attend, including myself, Mr. Chairman O'Hara, Jeff Fisher, Chairman, or Commissioner Fisher, Jody Haner, Justin Meeks.
My seconded that.
Any discussion? Home favor.
We will return to this room, I guess I said that, at 10:32.
The vote was unanimous.
Come on, Jason.
I'm here.
I move that we go back into session at 10:32. I move that we go back into session at 10:32.
Yeah, I move that we go back into session at 10:32.
First you got, first you got to make...
We have this whole long litany.
Yeah, first you got to make a motion to, no, come, come out of executive session, yes.
Make a motion, we come out of executive session at this point, and then go back into.
These are the county commissioners.
County commissioners come out of session at 10:32.
P.M.
A.M.
Yeah, A.M., sorry, I need a second now.
Check it. Any discussion? No in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Action, no.
Right.
No action.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to put the subject on the agenda for tomorrow? Would that be workable for you?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, 30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have, Kendall, put medical discussion on the agenda for 30 minutes, if you would, please.
Is that as an executive session, or an open session?
Oh, I don't know. Hi, hi, what do you want? You want executive? Probably executive, since we have non-disclosure agreements. Make it an executive session. An executive session will be KSA 75-4319B.
B4.
Well, do we need to put in there who they're going to be at this time?
You can make that motion tomorrow.
Okay.
But we do want to put on the agenda that we got to follow the script to go into executive session.
Yes. Follow the script.
This won't leave my desk for the next four years.
Okay.
Will I make a motion that, are we done?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Same time. Motion carries unanimously.